I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, January 28th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
No, they're not.
Is there any input from the audience on tonight's agenda? This is for items that are not already on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening is approval of our December 16th, 2019 regular meeting minutes and our January 14th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. The first item on our agenda this evening under our public hearings is a request by Dakota Aggregates for renewal of their large-scale mineral extraction permit for 2020 and aggregate processing facility IUP through 2024, and I will turn that over to Kyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. As you know, the first item on the agenda is renewal of permits for Dakota Aggregates. The first permit is for one year, as you mentioned, and then the second permit relates to the aggregate processing facility and the aggregate recycling processing facility, which is in the southern portion of the mine. That is a little different from our previous year's reviews in that this is a separate component of the interim use permit. That's still part of the overall mining site. So, the recommendation for both those is for approval of the one-year permit for the large-scale mineral extraction and renewal of the five-year permit for aggregate processing. With both permits, staff is not proposing any changes to the conditions or criteria for the permits, again, both for the mining and for the aggregate processing permit. I just want to quickly summarize some of the changes, then I'll show some of the maps and details from that in just a minute here. So, just to get us oriented, starting out with the one map here. So, this is the map that we've been using for the public hearing for several years. This is just indicating the overall aggregate processing area that is permitted through the city. The one thing I want to really clarify here is that this particular map and the area shown here covers the entire site. This is not the entire site that is authorized for mining, however. Within the mine, there's certain restricted areas where there's buffers and where there's birmingham and some other features that will stay open space, and that is not reflected on this map. So, the mine itself extends from Highway 42 in the north down to Highway 46 in the south, and then is bounded by Bacardi Avenue here, and then roughly to Akron Avenue over here, with the exception of the old Turkey Farm, which is within the mining area, and everything to the east of that that's outside of it here. So, just to get us oriented real quick. So, for 2019, the north mining area, the applicant is asking to increase that area by 12 acres, or just slightly over 12 acres, which will be offset by reclamation that was done within the past year. The south mining area, they would be going into a little over 10 acres for new mining, which again would be offset by reclamation in that southern mining area. The other kind of major feature of the permit request this year is that Dakota Aggregates is asking to begin, or has noted that they will begin doing dredging activity within the open water area of that southern mining area, and I'll talk about that in a little more detail here as we get through the report. In terms of a general update, the applicant, the two kind of, I think, major features that stand out from the report the applicant submitted is that in the north area, there were 275,000 tons of material that were sold from the stockpile in that northern area. That leaves 450,000 tons of material roughly remaining in that area, and that's very consistent with some of the past discussions the Planning Commission and the council have had about the current status of that large stockpile in the northern mining area. You know, kind of laying that out here over the next couple of years, I think it's pretty easy to see that they're on track to have that pile more or less drawn down within the next two, possibly three years, subject to market conditions and the demand for the sand material continuing on the pace it has. Down in the south, there were just under 1.9 million tons of material sold, which was an increase of about 200,000 tons from the previous year, which again indicates that there's a very strong demand for aggregate materials coming from Dakota Aggregates Mine, and in fact, I think last year's probably the, one of the highest years for material coming out of the mine since it's been open. So, with that, I think I will kind of point to some of the maps here now. So, the maps that we have in the packet include several overall maps showing the mine. This is the one that I've been trying to include in each of the renewals that we've been talking about, just because it lays out the entire mine with an air photograph showing kind of where the various phases were as the mine, when the mine was initially permitted and as they progress now. And I think one of the key features here I want to point out for the Planning Commission and the audience is this buffer area. Again, if you note, the initial map for the public hearing showed the boundary going up to Highway 42, however, a good portion of that is this buffer area that extends along Highway 42. Then the mine itself is divided between two primary areas, the wet mining area and the southwest portion of the site, and then the north-central kind of dry mining area, which are the phases here shown in colors. So, as we mentioned in the review last year, and it's part of our review comments going into this year, the applicant did ask and has gotten some flexibility for following the phasing as they're showing here. So, you know, in essence, what they've been able to do or what they've been permitted to do is start in the first couple of phases here, as shown, but then work their way towards the west before coming back to the east, and we'll have some maps that show that a little more clearly. The intent there was to really help them complete their mining activity in the areas that were closest to existing residential structures within the community, and then gradually work their way to the middle of the mine, then further to the south, again, trying to make sure that, given the projected phasing and the kind of rate at which they were working, that they were able to continue to offer the most distance and separation between those residential areas and the mining itself. So, kind of going back to then some of the more detailed maps that you have, each year the city's given a map indicating kind of what the status of the mine is and where the mining has occurred, both in that previous year and previous years, and then looking forward to the next year. So, this is the kind of blow-up of that north-central mining area. You can just see Highway 42 out here on the extreme northwest part of the site, and then Biscayne Avenue down here. So, this map is showing you a couple of things which I'll point out, and this is going to be consistent kind of terminology as we move to the next map. We have reclaimed areas up here that are shown by this kind of dark hashing. We have areas that are under active reclamation with the lighter hashing down here, and then the active portion of the mine, which is more or less in the center of this map right here. And so, for 2020, the applicant's proposing to add these additional 12 acres over here within Phase Four. So, that's what's being shown for work that's been completed and work that's proposed for the next year. Couple other things to point out just quickly with this map. The stockpile we've talked about is roughly up in this area, part of the site, which is why that site has not been able to be mined yet, and the applicant, as we'll see later here, is planning on moving into that area in one of the next phases. So, the south mining area map is very similar again in terms of the graphics used and the methodology that's being used here. This is Highway 46 down here, and the station trail entrance into the facility down here. So, all of the aggregate processing is taking place on this part of the site, just off of this mining map. So, again, showing very similar terminology. The really dark kind of hashed area are those areas that are currently being actively mined. So, that includes all of these Phase One and Two areas and part of the Phase Ten area up here. For 2020, the applicant is proposing to continue to extend the mining into the northernmost portion of that Phase Ten area, which is this yellow highlighted box right here, and then move into the easternmost portion of Phase Four, which is the cross hashing right here. So, total area that's projected for expansion in 2020 is about 10 acres then, given those areas. The other feature of this map that you'll see in some of the air photographs, as well as we look at those later on, is there is open water there now. So, the applicant has begun mining below the groundwater elevation, and so that water's being exposed and expanded as they continue to kind of dig below that groundwater elevation. Under the city's initial permit for the facility and based on all of the document and records that we have in the file, it appears that the city did intend to treat that as essentially reclaimed, a reclaimed portion of the mine. And the logic there is that because there is open water there now, what is visible and what is seen from the surface is not going to change moving forward. We do want to note, however, that in order to complete the mining down to the anticipated mining elevation, the applicant will be bringing in a dredge later this year, and will be mining and bringing up materials from that dredge down to, again, the permitted elevation. So, what'll happen over time, and as you'll see in later permits, this kind of reclaimed open water area is going to expand as they continue to mine below that elevation, and as they continue to reclaim more of that open water, you'll see an expansion of these, what's shown as yellow here now, but, you know, future phases. So, that's kind of the status of the mine. One of the issues that was brought up last year, as I mentioned, is, was kind of phasing. So, one thing staff wanted to do was put together the information we have from the Dakota Aggregates and try to more accurately or better picture how those phases may look on the phasing map that was submitted. And as I said at the start of the meeting, one of the issues we've had is that as the applicant has continued to move and kind of work within the phases that have been approved by the city, they're really technically out of the numerical order that we had in the original plan. So, we wanted to see an update that just provided a better picture of, you know, the next phases, where they were going and how that may look, looking out, you know, several years. So, this is the map that was put together, and hopefully it's a little clearer, and all the colors don't come through real great here, but we're highlighting the areas that are either reclaimed or where the reclaim is in processing green. The red is the active mining areas, and then the blue are the areas that the applicant noted in their narrative where they anticipate, you know, going in those future phases. So, it includes, you know, 2020 being that eastern portion of the Phase Four area and some of the active mining area down here that hasn't been completed as of this year yet, then moving up into the, what is a portion of the Phase Two and Phase One area, which is up here, which is labeled as B on this map, then back down into what I've labeled as C, but is really Phase Three of the project, and then coming back and eventually heading over to the east. Now, in all the phasing plans that have been approved and reviewed by the city, Phase 11 was always, you know, obviously very late in that process, and it'd be the same thing here. So, there'd be some work coming back along the southern portion of the map here, and then coming back around to pick up Phase 11. So, that is kind of the latest, greatest update in terms of where the applicant is anticipating kind of going with this material. And, you know, more critically for the city, I think, and for the interest of kind of minimizing and kind of drawing down some of the activity in the north mining area, the applicant is projecting that, you know, within the next two years, they'll be up working and mining in this north mining area, and that stockpile will be gone, and then subsequently that northern road, haul road will go away as well at the same time, since it will no longer be necessary to remove material from that north mine. Then the last kind of map that I want to show before we get into some questions and answers on this one is an aerial photograph showing that same thing, but hopefully giving maybe a little more perspective of kind of where these phases fall within the overall mining area. So, the colors that we have on here are the same colors from the last map, showing the green reclaimed on the western portion of the mining area, the red being the active area, and then those blue areas being the future development. And one thing that staff mentioned in the reports is that as we talked to Dakota Aggregates and reviewed their mining operation permit and narrative for this year, we did want to sit down with the University of Minnesota and kind of make sure that they were on board with the project phasing being brought forward here, and that the project phasing was not going to interfere with the development plans that the U-More has for the property. And a particular concern there, as we've continued to talk to U-More, it's becoming more and more apparent that the initial phases of U-More likely will begin somewhere around the existing Met Council Interceptor Facility up in this portion of the site, so it's in the extreme northern, just outside of the mining area. But based on kind of the schedule that the university is expecting in terms of their development, and given, taking that into account with Dakota Aggregates process, it looks like there shouldn't be any conflicts, and the university hasn't said there will be any conflicts. By the time, you know, the university is actually developing land, if they decide to go forward with something and move forward with a project, Dakota Aggregates will likely be very much into either Area C here or Area D, and, you know, a fair distance away from that development area. And the last kind of map I want to highlight, just sort of the two maps we always show here, looking at the aerial image from 2018, comparing it to the most recent year. So, this was the status of the mine as of 2018, and really the focus, I think, should be this part of the site where there's been additional work in excavation and mining taking place, and maybe up here a little bit where you'll see the restoration taking place, and then down the central part of the south mining area where there's open water. So, this is 2018, and then 2019. Again, just highlighting that you'll see there's additional restoration up here, active mining taking place here with restoration ongoing right here, and then the open water that you'll see down in the southern part of that site. So, in terms of other review comments, you know, one of the issues and criteria that staff has been continuing to work with the applicant in terms of monitoring and updating the city on is noise. We mentioned at the last year's review that there really wasn't enough night hauling taking place, that staff felt the city had received, you know, good information about noise levels, especially when night hauling was occurring on the property. So, we did approach the applicant early this year, laid out kind of a schedule for what the expectations were for noise monitoring, and so noise monitoring was conducted, you know, in the months of May to June roughly, and was also being done over a course of time where night hauling was happening. So, we have records in the report and from the applicant, you know, basically monitoring data for two different periods of time at two different sites outside of the mining area, and you have that information, and I'll maybe talk about those real briefly here. The findings from that essentially, you know, note that there were really no periods of time where the applicant was not in compliance with the MPCA sound standards, which are what the city uses to determine compliance with our zoning requirements and is referenced in the mining permit for the mining operation. There were some areas where there was periods of noise detected that were not compliant with state standards, but those happened at periods of time when the mine was not in operation. So, a big, I think, part of the discussion that staff had with the applicant, and that was kind of noted from the reports that were submitted, is that there are times where there are peak noise periods. They seem to occur fairly regularly in the morning hours, right around what would typically be the morning rush hour time. It's not always consistent, but generally that's the pattern that follows. So, I think from that, you know, we can make a pretty strong inference that there's some noise happening from traffic on Highway 42 that certainly impacts the monitoring that's being done, and outside of that, by and large, the applicant has been complying with those standards that we have adopted in our code. In terms of just other comments, with each annual review, staff does try to report on any complaints or any other issues that have come up from the mine for the Planning Commission and for the council as we review the annual permit. This year, the police department did not note any, receive any calls for complaints to investigate or go out and deal with noise in the mine. There was one complaint, a general complaint that came into the city about mining operations happening and noise coming from the mining operation. The applicant has pointed out to staff that that particular time, when that complaint came in, the mine was not in operation. And then secondly, we did have an individual that spoke at a hearing at your last meeting. It wasn't at the hearing for Dakota Aggregates, it was at a different hearing, but just had some general comments about noise and concerns about activity at the mine. And so, I'm not sure if that individual is present tonight, but they would certainly have an opportunity to speak again because this hearing is still open.
Kyle, just to correct you, it wasn't at the last meeting, it was at our December meeting.
I'm sorry, the December meeting.
Yep, just to clarify.
Thank you. So, just other general comments, you know, staff is suggesting some minor revisions to the language regarding phasing in the annual operating permit. Just to note that the applicant continued to work with staff on providing an updated phasing schedule with their narratives, that we can project out several years in advance where the next phases are. And then in terms of the wet mining, things seem to be progressing under the plan for the wet mining area. There were borings done, soil borings, in 2018 that are required as part of the permit. Those borings came back, or at least the findings there indicated that the depth of bedrock that was projected in the permit is indeed where that bedrock is, so ultimately the lowest elevation is acceptable under the terms of those permits. There is one more boring that needs to be done before the applicant is able to continue wet mining further to the west and north on the site, and that will need to be done again prior to that wet mining occurring. I think the applicant's indicated they're about five years out from doing that, but that's just, again, one of those future issues that need to be addressed, and that is still a condition as noted in the mining report. So, I do have those noise graphs. If there's an interest in the Planning Commission in talking about those, I'll, I can get those out, we can look at those. Otherwise, I'm going to just kind of reference the staff report and the charts that are in your packet. I know there's a lot of information there, which is again why I think if there's questions, we can talk about it, but I think if you are fine with the data, then we can move on from that. And, you know, with that, the staff recommendations for approval of the large-scale mineral extraction renewal for 2020, as well as recommendation to approve the aggregate processing interim use permit for an additional five years, as noted in the staff report.
Thank you, Kyle. Can you just comment, they did the noise study this year. I know there was a comment in the staff report about that for next year.
Yes. Staff is recommending that the noise monitoring continue into 2020, consistent with the terms and conditions that we used for this previous year.
Okay.
I know the applicant has expressed a desire to not continue to do the noise monitoring, but at this point, we feel like we've got one good year of data, and that a second year would be helpful, at least to help, you know, better understand some of the dynamics of what's happening in the area, both in terms of potential noise from the mine, but also those external factors that are contributing to noise in the region.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
I'll just comment, I am glad it's in there. I think it makes a lot of sense because we are moving further north, right? There's going to be more mining in the north range, so I think the noise measurement is going to be very helpful because it does seem to lead one to think there may be more risk to noise in that area.
Any other comments?
Well, I was going to also comment on the noise situation. I was, quite frankly, I was quite impressed at the lack of problems in creating noise and so on from that mining, as large of a thing as it is, and I do appreciate it being in there for the future.
At this time, we will continue the public hearing on this item. This public hearing was opened at our December 16th meeting and continued to this evening. Anyone that would like to speak on this public hearing may do so at this time, stating your name and address for the record. We do want to make sure that everyone here this evening has a chance to speak on the items, the item or items they came to speak on, so we do ask that you limit your public comments to three minutes and one time per item that you wish to speak to this evening. I will start out by inviting the applicant to come forward if they have anything to say. No? That's fine.
Good evening. My name is Pat Mason with Dakota Aggregates. First and foremost, thank you for your time and consideration of this request. I guess I would only like to say that, you know, we've had a, had a, had a strong year out there. We continue to be cognizant of any sound issues or any issues that we may cause. We want to be a good neighbor and a good, good member of the community, and I guess I would just offer myself to any questions you may have and our team as well, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak on this item may do so at this time. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any final comments or questions from the commission on this item? Okay. With none, we could entertain a motion. We've got two motions for this item this evening.
Do we do them individually?
Yes.
I would, I would move to recommend the city council renew the Dakota Aggregates large-scale mineral extraction permit for 2020, subject to the terms and conditions and the attached 2020 draft conditions for mineral extraction permit.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Keep us going.
Motion to recommend the city council renew the aggregate processing interim use permit through 2024, subject to the terms and conditions in the attached draft interim use permit resolution.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Our next item this evening is a text amendment to a zoning ordinance modifying the conditions for commercial kennels in the AG and RR districts, and I will turn that over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is being brought to the commission for review by staff following discussions that took place with a resident who had inquired about the zoning and the whether or not a commercial kennel would be permitted on their property as part of their licensing process with the State of Minnesota Board of Animal Health. Reviewing the zoning ordinance, their site was below the 20-acre minimum site requirement. It did meet all the other requirements for conditional use in the AG zoning district, but as our, as we discussed the issue further, they provided some information from neighboring cities related to commercial kennels and the requirements for those uses in adjacent communities. So, following that, staff did do a review of other municipalities zoning ordinances as it related to commercial kennels to identify potential changes that could be made to ours to bring it more in line and more consistent with what other communities have in place, as well as bring it, make it a little bit more effective at mitigating some of the impacts of a use like that on adjacent properties. Additionally, in the zoning ordinance currently, commercial kennels are not defined. Their definition for a kennel is only included in the Title VII Police Regulations in the section related to animal control and the keeping of animals. So, I'm just briefly going to go through the conditions as they exist currently in the zoning ordinance, and then the proposed conditions that staff is recommending for the text amendment. So, currently, as I said, a commercial kennel is a conditional use in the AG Agriculture and RR Rural Residential Zoning Districts with three conditions of approval. The first being that the site is a minimum of 20 acres. Staff found that that's much larger than most other communities. The next closest was a minimum site area of 10 acres. On the low end, there were communities that didn't, that had no site area minimum for the proposed use. The second condition in this zoning ordinance, as it's currently written, is that all structures shall be located a minimum of 75 feet from all residential property lines. For reference, the minimum setback for farm animals or any pens used to contain them is 100 feet from an adjacent residential structure, so not, not related to the actual property line. And then the third condition in the zoning ordinance for commercial kennels is that the use is subject to the regulations regarding the care and keeping of animals, and that's the disposal of animal waste, the size of the confinement to allow enough room for movement of the animal within, within an enclosure. And as I said, staff did notice, did note that there isn't a definition of commercial kennel within the zoning ordinance, so in addition to the modification of the conditions for those two zoning districts, staff is recommending the inclusion of a definition of a commercial kennel in the zoning ordinance, and lastly, including commercial kennels as conditional uses in the general industrial and business park zoning districts. The reasoning behind that being that other communities are seeing doggy daycares, for example, a camp bow-wow being placed in other unused industrial buildings or business park settings. So, staff is recommending that the commercial kennel be added as a conditional use in those two zoning districts as well, so long as it can meet the conditions within the ordinance. So, staff is proposing five conditions that are modifying the existing. The first condition being modified would be that the site shall be, not be less than five acres in size. This, staff believes, will allow a greater number of properties that would be able to use the site, or use their property for this, for a commercial kennel use. The second change, which is perhaps the most, the biggest improvement that staff sees to the zoning ordinance, is that all structures used to house animals, including outdoor dog runs, are located a minimum of 500 feet from adjacent residential structures, and then in addition, and then 75 feet from residential property lines. The site that the, in question that the residents are located at was part of a greater 80-acre parcel, and their, their location is a farmstead surrounded by fields. So, while- So while the, they don't meet the minimum site area currently, they do fall within, or they fall outside the 500-feet distance from adjacent residential structures, which staff anticipates the major impacts from a use like a commercial kennel would be noise and perhaps odor, if there is an excess of animal waste, which there shouldn't be if they're following all the other requirements of the zoning ordinance. So by requiring a minimum of 500-foot separation from adjacent residential structures, it prevents a house being located near the edge of a property line while there's another house on the adjacent parcel within 500 feet, it would currently be allowed. So this kind of creates a better space between the residential uses. The third condition is that all commercial kennels shall be licensed by the state of Minnesota Board of Animal Health. I spoke with the inspector who was working with the resident in their license application process to get a better understanding of what they look for, and staff is, feels comfortable by allowing much of the regulation of a commercial kennel being left to the state for, as it relates to the animal health. And I'll also go through some of the requirements for the state board of animal health as it relates to commercial kennels and breeding operations. The fourth condition that staff is recommending is that the maximum number of animals shall not exceed the space provided in accordance with the requirements of the state of Minnesota Board of Animal Health. The state board has minimum enclosure requirements. In fact, they have a calculator on their website that you can enter in the size of the animals and number of animals, and it gives you a minimum area required for them. And so by including this, it does actually kind of note and call out the requirement for a specific amount of space per animal. And then the last condition is the same and is remaining unchanged, and that it's subject to the regulations regarding the care and keeping of animals within the city. And as I said, that relates to the type of enclosure and the cleanliness and the ability to be cleaned and the removal of animal waste. The definition that staff is recommending for commercial kennels within the zoning ordinance is a little different than the one that is included in the Section 7 related to animal control, in that the biggest change being that the term grooming is being removed from the definition, as there are a number of groomers that may, that likely do not even offer kenneling or boarding services, and so it would not be related to a commercial kennel operation. With that being said, I can take some questions on this. I know we do have a public hearing, so you maybe want to wait until you reset some public comments about the amendment, but that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any comments or questions at this time for staff?
I just had one. In the situation, we're looking, thinking about the 500 feet from adjacent residential structures and 75 feet from residential property lines. If somebody were to build a structure after the fact, and it's within that, say, 500 feet, how do we handle that?
Well, it'd become legally non-conforming, because the use is already in place. So if they were building a house within that area, it would be known, and it would already be an existing use.
It kind of grandfathered in, so to speak, okay. All right, good, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? At this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone that would like to speak on this item may do so at this time. Again, please come to the podium, stating your name and address for the record.
Hi, Michelle Fisher, 4836 160th Street East. And I guess I just have a question. I mean, I realize that there's parts of this that they don't currently meet the requirement. You know, I guess my concern is, is that it mentions that they can have several adult dogs now if they were to get this permit, and, I mean, and though there is not a huge noise concern, right, you know, at what they have today, I hear the dogs barking, whatever, and, no, I have not called the police, you know, to complain about the noise or anything like that. But my concern is, is that as they're allowed to have...
Michelle? I'm gonna just stop you for one minute. We are, right now, you're welcome to continue in a second. I just want to clarify what we're reviewing right now is the text amendment to change the ordinance.
Okay.
The request by Brent and Angela will be up next.
Oh, okay.
So you're welcome to continue to share, but I think your comments might be more applicable to their application.
Yeah, so that's really all I had to ask about, but yeah, so.
Okay, okay, thanks. Thank you. Any other comments from the public or questions? This time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Are there any other comments or questions from staff, for staff, before we move forward with this item this evening?
I think they answered the one question I had, and I mean, I do like the fact that we're building in ties to the state of Minnesota Board of Animal Health. I think relying on that for some of the content here is a really good idea.
I think that the research that was done of the neighboring communities and bringing our ordinance more into compliance with neighboring areas is good as well. With that, we could entertain a motion.
I'll move to recommend the city council approve the text amendment to the zoning ordinance modifying the conditions for commercial kennels in the rural residential and agricultural zoning districts, adding commercial kennels as a conditional use in the general industrial and business park zoning district, and adding commercial kennels to the definitions.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And what I, before we move on to the next item this evening, I want to just state that this item we just voted on, as well as the first item this evening, the request by Dakota aggregates, will both go to the city council meeting on February 18. And then we will move on to the next item this evening, which is a request by Brent and Angela Bosin for approval of a conditional use permit to operate a commercial kennel in the AG agriculture zoning district. Anthony, I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So this site location may be familiar to some of the commissioners. In 2017, the applicants, Brent and Angela Bosin, came to the city to request a conditional use permit for a conditional, or for a commercial event center. Their site, as I said earlier, is a farmstead that was originally part of a larger parcel and features seven, several historic barn or farm agricultural structures on the site. Since they received their conditional use permit and threw further research into the development of that use, they found it to be relatively cost prohibitive to retrofit the barn to accommodate guests for an event center space. So therefore, they are requesting a conditional use permit for a commercial kennel on their property, making use of the existing structures with no additional structures proposed. One of the conditions of approval will be that the conditional use permit for the commercial event center would no longer be valid, and if they did in the future want to propose or request a conditional use permit for that use, this, if approved, would become invalid, and they must meet the conditions, and that would be reviewed at that time as it relates to what would be happening in the future. Just a note there. So, just to familiarize the commission with the location of the site, it's located in the southeastern portion of the city on 160th Street east of Coates. Highway 52 is located here. This is 160th. County Road 42 is to the north, and then the boundary of the city is located here to the east of the site. To zoom in just a little bit, to give you a little bit more context on the site and the surrounding locale, I just wanted to provide a little bit closer aerial here. So initially, the, as I said, the applicants had come to the city to request information to verify the zoning for this site as part of its licensing process with the state board of animal health. It was determined that their site didn't meet the minimum site area requirements, and following that, staff conducted the review of the text, the zoning text of other communities. The applicant is proposing a commercial kennel operation with, without a boarding or doggy daycare component, it's strictly a breeding operation. From the staff, the city standpoint, commercial kennels contain breeders. From a state licensing standpoint, commercial breeders are separate from commercial kennels. So the applicants themselves are going through the licensing process to receive a commercial breeder license. The site itself is five acres in size. The main house where the applicants reside is located closer to the front street, or to the street in the front of the property. Within their home, they do have an area that is used for the nursery, and that's where the mothers whelp their pups, and the puppies remain until they are purchased and picked up by their future owners. The nursery area is, has a linoleum floor, as well as a washable wall that goes four feet in height. And while this isn't a requirement of the zoning ordinance, I do want to mention that it is one of the requirements for the licensing from the state board of animal health. Additionally, in the existing barn area, the rear portion of that is being used to house the adult dogs that are used for breeding. There's a number of kennels located within that structure. Staff did visit the site to just see kind of how the operation went, what it looked like, what impressions staff got from it. You can see here that it's all interior. There's climate control in the sense that there's ventilation. I don't necessarily know that it's air-conditioned, but there were fans to allow movement of air inside. And the floors are washable, again, as they're made of concrete. And then outside, there's a fenced-in area for the dogs to play, as well as some outdoor kennels, and you can see the swinging dog doors that would allow them to go in and out during the warmer months. So, as I said, they're not anticipating, or they're not proposing to add any additional structures, so there's very little in, from a site review standpoint, from a traffic increase, there's minimal traffic, as the only people that would be visiting the site would be those who are coming to pick out or pick up their dogs. So when reviewing a conditional use permit, there are eight general findings that must be made in addition to the specific conditions that were just reviewed in the prior item on the agenda. The first condition is that it's not detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Staff finds that the proposed use will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. Part of the licensing process is that they're required to be inspected by a veterinarian with the Minnesota Board of Animal Health. Additionally, the applicants are required, through their license, to have a protocol with a local veterinarian who establishes processes to ensure the health of the animals on the site. The second, the second finding is that it's harmonious with the objections of the comprehensive plan and the city code provisions. It is, the site is located within an area designated for agricultural uses. Commercial kennels were a conditional use, so the use itself, while not prior, while it didn't prior meet the site area requirements, it will once the, when the text amendment is approved. The site is a former farmstead, therefore, there's no change to the character, or central character of the area, in that it's, it'll be served by existing facilities such as streets and police and fire protection. And then there's a couple other findings related to the destruction of natural scenic historic features, and also excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, and glare, which are not, staff's finding that those will not be an issue with this use. And then again, I'll just briefly go through the five conditions that were reviewed prior with the text amendment item on the agenda. The site itself is five acres in size, so it meets the minimum site area as proposed in the text amendment. All structures are located, to house the animals are located at least 500 feet from adjacent residential structures. The nearest residential structure from the main house, because if you wanted to be technical, the nursery area is within the main house, and the nearest residential structure from that is 619 feet. The property lines around the property are all agriculturally zoned areas, so those are not considered residential property lines. Subject to the regulations regarding the care and keeping of animals within the city, staff visited the site, as I said. We found it to be clean, with little to no signs of animal waste in the, in the operation. There was minimal noise observed by staff, as the commission just received public comment that there is noise related to that. Staff feels that there's, being in an agricultural area, there are certain level of noise that would be expected. If it's excessive, to the point that we would be receiving calls, there would be enforcement, enforcement action taken in, through coming up with some reasonable solutions as far as when, when and how many animals can be outside at any given time. The fourth, the third condition, that all kennels must be licensed by the state of Minnesota Board of Animal Health. As I said, the applicants are in the process of becoming licensed. Staff did receive one call from a neighbor who did have a question regarding the licensure and what would happen if the license lapsed, and how would we find out, find out about that to ensure that they are maintaining their license? And that, I think, is a process issue that staff can determine from an administrative standpoint, just be a matter of calling the board and ensuring that their license is still valid. The maximum number of animals shall not exceed the space provided in accordance with the requirements of the state board of animal health. The site has been inspected and found to meet the requirements for a commercial kennel or dog breeder, so staff finds that this condition is met. And then subject to the regulations regarding the care and keeping of animals, and that's mainly that there isn't an excessive amount of animal waste that's piled up. It must be managed and maintained in a, in a reasonable manner. So with that, staff is recommending that approval of the request, subject to conditions found in the staff report, namely, that the commercial event center conditional use permit is no longer valid following approval of this request, that the applicant shall submit the required information listed in Section 7, 4B2, which is the license, licensing regulations that the city has in place for all animals, and it's simply a name, the applicant's name, address, contact information, and number of animals on site. The third condition included in the recommended action is that the applicant obtain and keep current with the state of Minnesota Animal Board of Health license. And then the fourth one, that the maximum number of animals shall not exceed the space provided in accordance with the requirements of the state of Minnesota Board of Animal Health. I know the applicants are present. They can probably speak a little bit more knowledgeably regarding their operation and how they maintain their kennel and breeding facility. So with that, I can take some questions.
Thank you, Anthony. Can you just clarify, so this, this request before us tonight is a motion to approve a conditional use permit, but is this operation already going on within this facility?
It is. There are currently dogs being bred on the site, correct.
So without the licensure from the state and without the permit?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments for staff at this time?
Just remind me, Anthony, and I, I'm sorry if I missed it, but the duration of the conditional use permit?
Conditional use permits are valid so long as the conditions are met, so there isn't a term like an interim use permit.
Okay. And how often are those conditions reviewed? Is it...
I think it's a matter of if there's, if we get complaints and calls, or staff is observing that conditions are no longer being met, but it's not, it's not a regular renewal process like an interim use permit would be.
Thanks.
The application with the state, however, for licensure is an annual renewal process.
Correct. And they are required to be inspected annually by the state.
But if the state would, for whatever reason, not pass their license, it's not like the state's gonna tell us.
No, I think it'd be up to staff to be following up on a, you know, annual basis.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff at this time? This time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. This public hearing is to discuss the request before us by Brent and Angela Bosin. Again, anyone that would like to speak on this item may do so at this time. Coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record, and if the applicant wishes to come forward, they may, we would invite them forward as well. well.
Hi, I'm Angela Bozen. Do you want our address?
Yes, please.
Okay. 4979 160th Street East, Rosemount. So, I just wanted to address the whole licensing thing. We did not apply for our license until we met the standards to get licensed, so you have to have so many dogs and so many litters prior to needing to apply for your license. So, that's why we did not apply for our license until we met those regulations. And as far as what we've been told is if we don't get approved from you guys, we have to sign something and they do actually submit it to the city. So, you guys would know if we did not meet our regulations. And they have showed up to our house three times unannounced and they have passed us each time so far. That being said, our adult dogs minus our moms are in the very back end of our property. We do try to control the barking as much as we can, but they're dogs. We do control how many are out at one time. We let all of our males out at one time, then we let all of our females out at one time, so they are not all out at one time. And we do have, our whole five-acre property is invisible fenced as well, so if they are out with us in the summertime, they are, they don't leave our property. I'm trying to think of what other questions you asked. Do you have any other questions for us?
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this time? No?
And I do apologize if there was the noise complaint. We do have one or two that bark more than others.
We're working with those two that are major barks.
Now that we know about it, we can address that.
For sure.
We didn't know anything about it.
We don't always hear it from the house, so we also have three loud kids, so sometimes we don't hear it. And if anybody does hear it, we would love for them to come out and let us know, because we don't always know what everybody else hears either, so. Like, we have a farmer behind us and we hear their dog sometimes, but it's like in the distance, so it's hard. I just don't know what people hear, so.
Depends which way the wind is going, if the corn is up or not. If the corn is down, you hear more, and the wind direction, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for addressing the licensure question.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this item, they may do so at this time? It did have the one member in the audience that spoke earlier on the noise complaint, so just making sure that that is also noted at this time. Seeing no one else, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Anthony, I've got one follow-up question. So, if the state requires so many litters and such before that you can get licensed and our permitting process requires you to be licensed, I kind of feel like there's a chicken and an egg thing. Like, you can't get the license from the state, but until you've done so many litters, but they can't have so many, they can't be permitted to have this kennel?
Yeah, I don't know what the threshold is from the state, what they would require for how many dogs. I know our limit is five adult dogs, which would be over six months of age, so that wouldn't include puppies.
Okay. So, somebody could do it with less than five dogs, they could maybe meet their state breeding thing.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for stepping my brain through that. Are there any other comments or questions?
Maybe just a procedural question if we're going to make the motion. Do we have to say anything about those eight general, what are the, the general findings as listed on page three of the motion, or is that just kind of assumed that that's?
Yeah, we wouldn't need to state those, just the four conditions.
Okay.
Yeah. Because those eight findings are in relation to assessing this or analyzing this, this I would, I think it's similar to our Dakota aggregates discussion if there are noise, so for those neighbors that are either in attendance or watching this or reviewing it after the fact, encouraging them to, to call 911 and report noise as they hear it so that it can be documented and researched as our continued correct method, correct?
Correct.
So, I'd encourage folks, and also, you know, if you know your, your neighbor, I think they were very open to, to that feedback as well, so that always works as well, but calling the police so that we can have it documented and the city can follow up appropriately.
Right.
If there's no other comments or questions, we can entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move to recommend the city council approve the request for a conditional use permit to operate a commercial kennel in the AG Agricultural Zoning District, subject to the following conditions numbered one through four.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This item also will go to the city council on February 18th. The next item this evening is a request of the Max Steiner Incorporated small-scale mineral, for a small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2020, and I will turn that over to Kyle.
Thank you, madam, chair members of the planning commission. I believe this is the last of the annual renewals for mineral extraction operations in the community. This also happens to be our newest mineral extraction use in the community as well. And as you'll see from my presentation, the last time this was issued, it was the original permit for the mine. So, this was a little different in that we are really just starting out with this mining operation, and so I think the overall review and so forth is going to be a little more condensed because of that. So, the request, as you know, is renewal for 2020. I do want to point out that this mine was originally approved in the summer of 2018, but because we wanted to get this in line with all our other renewals, basically during the calendar year, the city granted a one-and-a-half-year permit for that. So, that one-and-a-half years is up now, and so the request in front of the planning commission tonight is for an annual renewal. So, this would extend the permit from basically the first of this year to December 31st of this year, and they would need to apply for another permit next year if they want to continue to operate the mine. So, if I could just direct our attention to the screen here, so we can get you oriented in terms of the property we're talking about. So, this property is located in the eastern portion of the community, roughly a little under a quarter mile east of Highway 52. So, this is Highway 52 running north and south, then Highway 42 down here. The permit request that was just in front of us is located just off the bottom part of this, down here off of Highway 46. This is also located right next door to the Danner Inc. mining operation, which in turn is right next to the Bolander Mine. So, Danner is located right here, Bolander is located right here. So, again, similar to the Dakota aggregates permit, what's being highlighted here on the map for the Max Steiner Mining Operation is the entire property that the permit's been requested for. However, as you'll see in some of the leader maps, the actual mining operation is limited to about half of that overall area, and for the most part is centered on the southern portion of this mining site. The applicant has provided a map, just kind of giving the, where the site is in relation to the USGS Topographic Survey Map. This map is, it's kind of nice to see because it has topography on it, and by looking at the site here, you can kind of see how the remaining property kind of lays. And it's hard to see at the, at the scale we're looking at here, but as we've noted during several copies of plan discussions, on these parts of the city, there's more or less a ridge that follows the area just south of Highway 42 and runs, you know, for a good distance along Highway 42. And so, the city's comprehensive plan, which I don't have in here, really tries to divide or roughly divides the future land uses by that ridge. And the idea is that as you get closer to Highway 42, there are higher intensity uses than as you get further down that slope, there'll be lower intensity uses. So, the mining operations that are in place right now are more or less kind of going into that hillside and pushing it back a little bit more. Should have a little more flat land towards Highway 42 and a little higher elevation once you get further to the south. The applicant's permit includes a haul route map, which is what we require from all applicants. This one is pretty straightforward in that the trucks leaving the mine are heading out to Highway 42, following Highway 42, then either going north or south on Highway 52. There's an occasional truck that the applicant indicated might be using or heading east, but that's very rare and limited, again, given its close proximity to the major arterial road and Highway 52. The next few maps highlight the mine itself. So, this is an updated kind of current conditions map of the mine with Highway, Highway 42 that are north here, indicating kind of what the status of the mine is right now. So, the active mining area is shown in the darker blue color right here. The applicant in 2020, again, began work on the mine, which included construction of the entrance road, which is now shown right here, connecting up into Highway 42, began work on the berm, which is shown in the green kind of blobs here, running along the access road and then along the northernmost portion of the mine, and is working right now on stripping and mining material out of this area right here. The orange is the indication for a topsoil stockpile. And as of this past year, there's been no additional stockpiling materials on the site and no processing taking place within the specific confines of the mine as it exists right now. For 2020, the applicant is proposing to continue expanding the mine further to the south, so, back out here a little bit more. Everything that you've seen is similar to what was shown in the last map, the exception of the green hatched area down here, which indicates the area that will be stripped in mind heading into 2020. That area, you know, is approximately three acres, two and a half, three acres in size, which is similar to the size up here. So, by the end of 2020, the applicant's showing that there will be about five acres that will be under active mining or will have in mind already. And then just to kind of get us further oriented with the site as a whole, since I didn't touch on it previously, as I said, the, the kind of U-shaped parcel here is the entire site, and then the dark blue colors are the areas that are actually subject to the mining permit issued by the city, so it's a smaller subset of that. Then the applicant has previously divided the project into three phases. So, phase one is here, phase two here, and then phase three. Under the city's mining regulations, no more than, each phase can't exceed 15 acres in size, and then the applicant can't have more than 19 acres under active mining at any given time. And so, because it's a new mine, it is well under those thresholds, and so they're not even close to that requirement. The last kind of drawing I want to show here is the reclamation plan. With each mining permit, the applicant is required to have on file a reclamation plan. This indicates what the final grades are going to be for the site once the mining is done. And the main interest here on the part of the city is really reviewing it to ensure that there aren't impacts to adjacent properties, that the applicant is properly sloping the mine to those adjacent sites and not exceeding the city's slope standards, and that ultimately it's a site that can be redeveloped at some point in time consistent with the city's long-range plan, which, based on the review from the previous year, the city feels that this is adequate to conform to that. And then with, with all the mines in this area, as I mentioned, Danner and Bolander, they're all next to each other, so I think with each permit, there's kind of an interim plan for grades next to each mine. So, in this case, this is the eastern property boundary with the Danner Mine over here. Each of those mines has a note indicating that as those mines develop and as they are continued to be excavated, there will be opportunity in the future for this to be eliminated, so there would not be, you know, a hillside and bump between those two mines. Those will be mined to, to match the grades on each, each area. And then lastly, this is, this one's a little more interesting than some of the ones we see in that, this is the air photograph from 2018 and then the air photograph from 2019. So, 2018's down here, 2019 is up here, so you can see, as of the fall of 2018, there was no activity that was taking place yet. By 2019, you now see the, the road, the berm, and then the active mining area in place on this particular map. So, the applicant's indicated in their permit request that there were 51,000 tons of material removed in 2019, and that goes back, I think, to the very, very end of 2018. For 2020, they're anticipating about 30,000 tons of material, so something very similar and an amount that's consistent with some of the smaller mines that we see in the community. For 2020, they're also proposing to finish the berm that's been under construction throughout this year or this past year. Right now, the berm has been finished to about eight feet in height, and then the applicant intends to finish that up to the, the full 15 feet in height as proposed under previous permits. One note with the berm is that, I'll go back to one of our earlier drawings here, under the permit review that was conducted in 2018, the original berm, actually, the original berm permit was for a berm along the residential property line here on the western side of the property continuing along Highway 42. The applicant decided to flip that to really promote a better kind of screening and buffering from those residential uses by having the berm go along the road, which is where, you know, much of the impact should be expected because of trucks entering and exiting the mine. But then in addition to that, the applicant's proposed to move it, you know, the, the actual east-west portion of the berm to the southernmost portion of the mine, keeping that berm closer to the mining operation itself, which ultimately should have some benefits in terms of reducing visibility to the mine, but also providing a better sound barrier, where the sound is better deflected away from neighboring properties if that berm is closer than if it's further away, as we heard during some of our previous year's discussions with the Dakota aggregates mining operation. So, staff is fully supportive of that request since it really accomplishes the same thing by screening all active portions of the mine, you know, in this case, it's just moving it a little closer to the mine itself. So, that's the, kind of the current and proposed status of the mine. The one other issue that came up in the review is that the applicant has been working with the Dakota County on access and their access permit. I incorrectly stated in my report that there's a temporary permit that was issued. I was able to follow up and talk to the county in advance at this meeting after the report went out, and the county confirmed that there was a, a permit issued for the access. There were just some conditions on that required some improvements on the part of the applicant in order to meet the requirements of the Dakota County. Most importantly, the county is asking, was originally asking for both a center escape lane around the site for cars turning in, coming from the opposite direction, and then a right turn lane for cars heading to the east and the, towards the east end of town. It sounds like the county is backing away from the escape lane requirement, but is still working with the applicant on coming forward and approving a plan for that right turn access into the property. I did kind of question the county about their concerns about that and whether or not they felt we should be addressing that with our annual permit review, and they did not indicate that they felt that needed to be done since they're continuing to work with the applicant, and the applicant's been cooperative with them in terms of determining what needs to happen to make those improvements that they're requesting. So, really, those are the only issues that really come up. It's, it's a mine that only recently has begun operations, so it's not, it's not surprising that staff hasn't identified a number of issues here. Staff is recommending approval of the request with the permit conditions as they've been drafted. Those permit conditions have been updated mostly to reflect the current phasing and the updated dates for the permit. Otherwise, staff doesn't have any additional comments at this time, and will be happy to answer questions from the planning commission.
Thank you, Kyle. Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners? Seeing none at this time, I will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the item of a request by Max Steiner Incorporated may do so at this time stating your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Monty Noel. I'm at 4322 145th Street. It's an adjacent property to Max Steiner. I just want to say, so far, he's been a good neighbor. Just some issues I was having, maybe with the drainage. In the spring, I've got like a river that runs across my property that goes out into his property. I just want to make sure that there'll be enough culvert capacity to get under 42 and out into the fields. There's quite a bit of water. If it backs up, it runs through my buildings. I got to keep that ditch going. All the water comes off of like Rexical's property, all that comes across my property. I just want to make sure that our drainage, because they're going to add more water to that volume that's going to slope in that direction. The, the noise hasn't been too bad. Once in a while, we hear slamming tailgates, but you got three mines that are doing this work. The other question I had was where it said no jake breaking, is that only pertaining to his property? Or could I request the county to put up a sign that would say no jake breaking coming down that hill? As you come down the hill, pass the golf course, you got a lot of trucks, well, you got a lot of trucks going in all of those three mines, that there would be a jake, no jake break sign posted or something? Would that be a county thing or, you know, what that, how would you go about getting that? I mean, I've seen it in cities before where it says no jake breaking, so that's just a concern I have. And then the, the turn lane, I assume that won't come onto my property. I assume it'll be on, down on Max's side. They'll, if they do, they'll make a turn lane there. I've seen they had some markings for the utilities in that area, like they were going to dig in that area there, so. Do you, is there like a plan for that I could find? I, I read the whole permit, and that's where I got the jake breaking and the other things that were on there, but.
So, Monty, what we'll do is we'll collect these questions, and then at the end of the public hearing, we'll have staff address the questions that have been brought up and make sure you have, oops, make sure you have answers or contacts and resources to go to.
Okay. I just want to say, so far, he's been a good neighbor. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak on this item?
Hi. Greg Steiner, 1521 Lone Oak Road, Eagan. I'm the, representing the applicant. As far as the turn, I could address a few of the last speaker's questions if you'd like.
That would be great, Greg. Yes, that would be great.
The turn lane, we've been going around the city for well over a year.
Hi. Greg Steiniger, 1521 Lone Oak Road, Eagan. I'm the, representing the applicant. As far as the turn, I could address a few of the last speaker's questions if you'd like.
That would be great, Greg. Yes, that would be great.
The turn lane, we've been going around the city for well over a year.
The city or the county?
I'm sorry, the county.
Okay.
No, seeing as it's a county road.
Yes.
The proposed turn lane is 300 feet long, so it would not extend beyond the limits of our property. They had asked for a bypass lane for the westbound traffic. The county has since decided it's unnecessary, and they are not asking for that. Our concern has been that our mine of the three there has the very least traffic, and no one else has a turn lane except us. And we really think the county is being a little inequitable. But that has nothing to do with you guys, unless you want to require of the other mines, which I wouldn't ask you to do that to them.
It's a county road. It's outside of us.
I know. As far as the drainage, if there, if there is a problem with drainage, we'll enlarge the culvert. We have a culvert in, and there was some heavy rain last year that did back up at the culvert. I think some of our erosion controls and biologs got free and actually plugged the culvert, so it looked worse than it was. So, we don't anticipate that. Once turf is established on the berm, and we don't anticipate that the culvert in place should handle the water. It was designed to and approved by the county for that, so we don't see a problem.
Perfect.
Do you have any other questions I could help you with?
Unless you have any, have had any conversation with the county or know anything on the jake breaking that the gentleman mentioned?
We would be perfectly happy to ask our trucks not to use their jake brakes on the county road, but we're not in control of anyone else's there. And we've had no direct discussions with the county about that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, I would like to point out or add to the public hearing discussion that I did talk to a representative of the family that owned some land further to the west on Highway 42, the Retsigal, Retsigal property. Am I saying that correctly?
Retsigal.
Retsigal property. Just with some general questions about the mine, where it was located. And then she really had more questions about the city's future land use plans for that area. So, I did share some of our planning efforts and so forth there. So, I think her main concern was making sure that the applicant did have a reclamation plan in place, and that that reclamation plan was not going to restrict or prohibit future development of their property at the appropriate time. And so, I think after the conversation, she felt comfortable that those issues are being addressed through the city's permitting process. And I did share all the plans with her at that time as well. Just want to make sure that that's added to the record that we had that conversation in advance of the meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the hearing?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Kyle, I think we got a couple of the questions that Monty asked about. The drainage, Greg addressed some of that drainage. If there is drainage issues, would Monty call the city, is the city going to help support issues out there if there's drainage?
I mean, we kind of look into it, but as the applicant noted, the permit for the culvert was issued by the county, and so it's part of the county drainage system.
Okay.
But we're happy to, I think, help coordinate if there are some issues, especially as it, you know, is backing up onto city land or private land that's within the city.
Okay.
Otherwise, you know, for the mine itself, I mean, we look at the mining operation in terms of the grades and so forth. There is some ponding that takes place within the floor of the mine, but obviously because they're digging down, usually there's not a problem with, with water escaping the mine. It's more a matter of making sure they're properly handling that runoff, not creating any hazardous conditions, and ensuring that they've got sufficient capacity to handle the just internal runoff from the mine itself.
Okay.
And then the question about jake breaking and noise, it is specific to this site. So, if there are, if there is anything happening related to jake breaking or noise from the mine, that's something the city can take action on in accordance with the permit requirements, which is listed specifically that they should not be doing that. So, like you said, if there are some complaints about that, they should, those should come into the city. Ideally, we'd have the police department get the call so they can go out and investigate and then take action as appropriate. Just in general, citywide, I think it was mentioned that that is a county road, and so the county is going to have some control over what's happening there. I'm not aware that the city has a citywide policy for jake breaks or that in the community, but we do have a citywide noise ordinance that we've talked about at various times during this meeting and other meetings with the Planning Commission, and so that will be enforced accordingly if an individual or individuals are violating those standards. So, similar process that if that's occurring, make the call to the police so they can go and investigate and make a decision or determination as to what's happening when it's occurring and whether or not there's some cause to, to warrant, you know, some kind of violation of our permits and our ordinances.
Okay. And is it, I believe this to be the case, but I can tell you that I don't have all the permits memorized. The jake breaking, if it's part of this permit, is it safe to assume the other mines in that area that it's also part of theirs?
It's, it's part of all the mining operations that I'm aware of and I recall that we've done recently. So, yes, there'll be a similar requirement. And that's part of, again, why we ask that we get the call so we can investigate so that we can determine, you know, what the source is, where it's coming from, and then identify the appropriate individuals.
Appropriate individuals. Okay. Thank you. And I think there was a question on if it would be something that were, a sign could be put up on the road, that again, being a county road, would go to the county. Is that correct?
That is correct. For the county road, the city would not control what's happening in that right away. And then I, again, would defer to any city policies for city roads. And again, I don't recall that we have any policy for that particular issue.
Okay. So, it would be the county that would then, that we should make that, that the applicant, not the applicant, the resident could make that request to, for that. Are there any other comments or questions from the commission on this item? Now, we could entertain a motion.
I'll move to recommend the city council renew the Max Steiner Incorporated Small Scale Mineral Extraction Permit for 2020, subject to the terms and conditions in the attached draft 2020, conditions for mineral extraction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. This item will also go forward to the city council on February 18th. That ends our public hearing section for this evening. The next item on our agenda is a request by, is an old business item, a request by Equity Lifestyle Properties for a major amendment to the Rosemont Woods PUD to develop an additional 39 home sites within the boundaries of the Rosemont Woods Mobile Home Park. And this item is continued from our December 16th meeting, and I will turn that over to Anthony.
And thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, this is a continuation of the December 16th meeting when the review began of this item. So, my presentation and review is mostly going to consist of the comments that were received by the commission at that meeting and the concerns that the commission brought up at that time too, and the additional research that we conducted and information that we provided. The applicant or the representatives for the applicant are also here, and I know they do have some information to share with the commission regarding some of the concerns that came up at that meeting as well. So, I'm just going to begin with a little review of what the request entails, and then I'm going to go into those four major issues that were brought up through public comment by the commission following this. So, as a reminder, the Rosemont Woods Mobile Home Community is located north of City Hall, east of Highway 3, South Robert Trail, and then south of Conimera Trail along this way here. The site itself is 40 acre, 40, 49 acres in area, and the proposed expansion would be 39 additional home sites within the community. So, in area, just giving you a rough idea of the layout of the site, the proposed expansion area is going to occur in three main parts. The greatest or most, the biggest expansion area being an extension of Burgundy Avenue to the south into this wooded area. Some additional home sites will be located west of that roadway. And then there's a storage area here that will be replaced by five home sites. And for reference, you can see the layout being proposed here. So, again, the extension of Burgundy Avenue with the home sites there, some additional sites along these existing streets, and then in these two areas in the north and east portions of the site. So, the four issues that staff heard at the December 16th meeting were landscaping, particularly as it related to the south along the Infiltration Basin and 140th Court near the Glen Rose neighborhood. There was also a concern raised regarding traffic. That was a name mainly the traffic that would be going onto Conimera and as it reaches Highway 3. Oh, and with regards to landscaping too, it also came up briefly, although a little less, to a lesser extent in this area in the northwest portion of the site as well. And then traffic, as I said, crime was another issue that came up. And then briefly, the commission mentioned the setback, the side yard setback requirement in the, in the Rosemont Woods neighborhood. So, I'll begin with the landscaping, and I'll start by showing what the original landscape plan showed and what was presented at the December 16th meeting. Some landscaping was provided on the front and back of each lot with some additional landscaping on the west side of this area between the expansion area and South Robert Trail. Additional landscaping was provided on the front and backs of the lots within the southwest portion of the site with some minimal landscaping around the Infiltration Basin. So, an updated landscaping plan provided by the applicant shows an additional 23 coniferous trees or white pines, and then nine additional deciduous trees. The white pines are mainly used for screening, and they're shown along Conimera Trail here to provide some screening from that northern ride of white, as well as some additional trees planted west of this expansion part in the northwest of the city, of the, of the community. The other main area where the landscaping plan has been updated was this southern portion. 140th is just along the south with Glen Rose, further south of that. The applicant has updated the landscaping plan to provide additional white, white pines along the southern border, as well as some river birch to provide some screening on the other side of the Infiltration Basin, and the addition of two oak trees shown right there. So, with the landscaping plan updates, the applicant did provide some renderings to give an idea of what that would look like when the landscaping is fully established. So, here is the existing condition, if you're viewing it from the intersection of Conimera and South Robert Trail, looking southeast toward the Rosemont Woods Mobile Home Community. With the additional white pines and then the deciduous trees shown on the landscaping plan, this would be the as-built following the planting of those, those trees. From the south on 140th down near the Glen Rose neighborhood, looking north and northeast into the neighborhood, this is the existing condition. There's some natural shrubbery here. Much of this is going to be graded to accommodate the Infiltration Basin. Following the planting of those additional white pines along that area is, this would be the proposed condition here following the establishment of those trees. Staff did talk to the applicant about providing some additional shrubbery or more ground greenery here that would maybe create a more natural space, more consistent with kind of the shrubs that are along there currently. And the applicant did express a willingness to work with staff on that. So, moving on from landscaping, I would like to touch on traffic. There was a traffic study that was done by the applicant and reviewed by the city engineering staff. They analyzed both if there was a no build, so if the, if the expansion of Rosemont Woods didn't occur, and what the traffic would look like following the construction of the proposed expansion of Rosemont Woods. And from a traffic engineering standpoint, they classify roadways based on their level of service or how full they are, if they can, if they're, how well they're able to accommodate the traffic. And that's graded in various thresholds, A through, I think, is it F? And the, the analysis conducted by the traffic engineer showed that it wouldn't create a change in the level of service. So, while there may be some traffic increases, it wouldn't actually push that into the next level of where it would be less functional. That is included, the traffic report was included with the staff report, and I think the applicant could maybe answer more questions as I'm not a traffic engineer, nor do I play one on TV. The third thing was crime. That came up frequently. Residents were nervous or concerned about an increase in crime as a result of the additional 39 home sites. The staff worked with the police department to identify a comparative, comparative analysis of different neighborhoods throughout the community, basically analyzing the number of calls per 100 housing units in various neighborhoods, mainly broken down by subdivisions. They found that in the, in Rosemont Woods, there has, in 2019, there was an average of 86 calls per 100 housing units in there, which is higher than average. The average is about 43 calls per 100 housing units, but nowhere near the highest, which was 153 calls per 100 housing units. For reference, I'll provide a little map to give you an idea of how those calls are kind of spread throughout the community. The darker green, the lower number of calls per 100 households, and the red would be the higher number of calls per 100 households. It's a little deceiving some of these areas in the north because there's so few housing units up there that it doesn't take that many calls for it to actually bring up that average, that, that call ratio. But Rosemont Woods is actually similar to many other single-family home neighborhoods in the community as far as the number of calls per 100 households. And the police chief also noted in his memorandum that was included in the attachment that the surrounding neighborhoods are generally lower than the, the rest of the community as well. And then lastly, briefly wanted to touch on the side yard setbacks. This was a sample lot layout that was approved in 1981 and then amended to allow additional rear setbacks in 1991. The applicant is proposing to continue the same setbacks of five feet versus the 10-foot requirement in the zoning ordinance. Staff is still recommending approval of the five-foot side yard setback, mostly that because it's consistent with the existing planned unit development agreement on site. The setbacks themselves, as they've been, they haven't shown to be a problem as it relates to drainage and access, and that the applicant has indicated that if increased side yard setbacks were going to be required, that it would be more limiting on the home style or type of home that would be able to be placed on those versus reducing the number of lots on site. So, staff feels that allowing the residents in Rosemont Woods a greater, a greater variety and choice of, of types of homes in there would be a benefit to them. So, I think the applicant could speak to a few of these concerns themselves, but I would just like to entertain any questions the commission might have.
Thank you, Anthony. Can you just go back to the police call study there? And I know it was included in our staff report, but just for those in the audience, I just want to reiterate, what was included in, like when you say calls?
Yeah.
What does that include?
So, the calls that were related to traffic or weren't, that wouldn't be able to be pinpointed to a specific residence, were pulled out because there's no way to tell exactly where that call would have been.
So, like a traffic stop for speeding?
Right.
Something like that.
There are calls that are included in there, such as welfare checks, that are commonly what would be for someone maybe going through a mental health episode, but that, those were not pulled out. So, those are included in there as well.
So, mental health, welfare, some medical emergency?
Yep.
Those would all be included.
And then just other crime to vandalize or whatever.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions for staff at this time? Anthony, I had one, and I didn't, I apologize for not asking it a second ago, that you had commented about staff's recommendation on putting shrubs on the south side?
Mm-hmm.
And that the applicant is open to that. I do not see it as part of our conditions this evening. So, should it be something that is, is discussed and called out then?
Sure. Yeah. I think that'd be a good idea to actually have that, you know, documented.
Okay. So, we would want to add a seventh condition then regarding finalizing landscaping plan and approval by city staff?
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for city staff at this time? The applicant is here and does- The applicant is here and does have some stuff to present to us as well, so. At this time, I, this is old business. The public hearing on this item was closed previously, however, with the request for it to be continued in terms of some of the open items that the commission had, the applicant has put together some materials to present, it's my understanding, so at this time, we would invite them forward to do so.
Matthew Shoemaker, KH Civil Engineering, 3110 Wood Creek Drive, Downers Grove, Illinois. Just a couple of items I wanted to touch on that Anthony clarified as well. One is density. I know that was a bit of a concern last time as well. The proposed development has 39 lots, which is 4.45 units per acre, and the allowable is six units per acre. So I just wanted to clarify that we are below what is allowed by the zoning ordinance. And the other item being the setback concern. So the five-foot setback, as Anthony mentioned, allows for a wider variety of homes that can be placed on each site, and that is the single-section and multi-section units. And we feel that that will just provide more variety for the homeowners when they come into the community as well. Increasing that side yard setback would not reduce the number of sites or lots, it would just limit what they can have on that lot. I also wanted to mention that the applicant does have more than 200 manufactured home communities throughout the United States, and that five-yard setback is consistent throughout those communities. So I just wanted to make it clear that this is not a special request for this development, and it is consistent with the existing community side yard setbacks as well. Other than that, I don't have anything specific to the commission's concerns, but we do have the property manager here as well, who has a few other items they would like to present to the board.
Thank you.
My name is Sherry Kellen. I work with Equity Lifestyle. I'm a senior regional manager for the company. My address is 901 Lake Elmo Avenue North in Lake Elmo, Minnesota. I do know that there was some questions that you guys had from the last meeting and from this evening, and I would just like to, I guess, cover just a few of those for you guys. I definitely want to take this opportunity to note that Rosemount Woods community is part of the city and part of the neighborhood. You know, we have mothers and fathers and grandparents and families and children that live in our community. They're very proud of their community. It's important for us to make sure that we let you guys know, again, that they contribute to the schools and they contribute to the local businesses in the area. We do screen all of our applicants that come into our community, which is different than most traditional housing facilities in the city. So they go through a background check as well as a credit check. So we make sure that we know the people that are living within our communities. That's very important to us. We also have a set of community guidelines that each of those homeowners get. They also acknowledge those guidelines when they come into the community. As a company, we've invested into our property. I know Matt had mentioned that we have over 200 properties throughout the United States, and it's important for us to be good stewards of those properties, as well as to give back to our customers that live there. We do also provide storm shelters for our customers as well in Minnesota. We also have a wonderful partnership with a local nonprofit. They partner with us to have children's camps during the summer. They work with different customers on different items, try to meet some of their needs, as well as they're a big participant with us when it comes to the night to unite. I'd like to take this opportunity now to show, I guess, kind of our play system that we want to bring into the community, as well as some of our homes, so I'm not quite sure how I need to...
You can just set them right on that gray.
All right, perfect. Can we zoom in on that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Trying.
Maybe?
What are you doing?
Trying to aim at it.
Got to hold it up. There you go.
Well, let's move.
It's not cooperating, is it?
Yeah, it's technology.
There we go.
We can't control it, right?
Wow, why does it keep going now? Wow, I just keep pushing it to make it get bigger. Sorry about that.
There.
Look at that.
I think we're good. It looks great.
So this system, let's see here, we're adding it in addition, actually, to the existing system that we have there, so we'll be expanding on our current playground area. I also have three different types of homes.
Sherry, just to clarify, so this is going to go in that same area that the playground is today, being in addition, but being the same area?
Yeah. We really wanted to kind of create a community effect down there, so that, you know, parents can be in the same location with their kids. One's a little bit smaller of a unit, one's a larger unit, so it's kind of a multifunctional for smaller children and for more mature children, I guess.
Perfect.
So absolutely. And then I do have three home styles that we'll be putting in there. So we're working through some different floor plan options. So this one is actually with a garage and a half-front porch, so it gives our customers an option to be able to have a garage right there with their home, so the entrance would be kind of in the back of the garage with a side entrance there. We also have a floor plan without a garage, and that would be something similar to this one, which is also a multi-section home. And then we also have a single section as well that will be an option for our customers to choose from. So those are the three, the three home types that we're looking at bringing into the community. We provide an opportunity for people really to have the experience of purchasing a home for the first time. We also provide an opportunity for people that have larger homes to be able to downscale. So we're quite diverse in our customer. We're very proud of that. Again, we have a lot of retirees that come and live in our communities as well, that enjoy going south during the winter, and they have similar homes down in the south, in the snow belt or in the sunbelt, where they're able to live there in a manufactured house, as well as come back here and live in a manufactured home. We also, our homes are built to, you know, federal housing standards. You know, they're inspected, so it's something that, again, goes to an additional step that a lot of traditional homes don't go through. I guess I'd like to thank you for your time and try to make it as brief as I possibly could, so.
Thank you. I just want one question for you before you go. The three homes, so those will be three homes that would be available to people coming in and purchasing?
Yes.
So these 39 sites, then you'll develop as people come in and purchase them? Is that the right way to think about it?
Yes. So they'll be able to purchase homes. We will also open it up for other dealers in the area, for people to buy new homes from them and bring them into the community as well.
So those would be three that you would offer, but people could bring?
Yeah, these are three styles specifically, if it's exactly these three yet, we're not 100% on that, but they'll be similar to...
But people could bring in their own home, as long as it meets the same standards as what you have?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So it's a new development, and that's really, you know, what we're looking for is to have some like standards and like that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. You bet. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Maybe I can, I'll start with making a couple of comments. I know I, there were some concerns on this item last time. I do appreciate staff, as well as the applicant, working through the landscaping. I think the landscaping was a big thing that we voiced in wanting to see. I do appreciate the traffic study being done and the understanding of what happens there. I enjoyed seeing the home styles that are going to come, or that are kind of being proposed as well. And I think, you know, the crime was an interesting thing, I think, just in general, for us to understand kind of what that looks like throughout the city. And I think on the, you know, my personal feeling on the side setbacks, I'm never a fan of the low setbacks, but given that this development already has five feet in it, and, you know, I think some of the homes that we're able to put on those lots, it is seen in the same spirit with what is already there in that development and is present today. And it's not drastically different from what we are currently seeing in our, you know, five feet total, two and a half feet on each side that we do in single-family. So for the style of home, I think that that is, in my opinion, acceptable.
Yeah, I'll say it too. I agree, everything you said, Madam Chairperson. My two concerns were the landscaping, and I really like what's been done and what's been added there. It really feels like you were kind of listening to some of the residential input, as well as the commission, so I appreciate that. It looks really nice. The other one I was concerned about, again, just really kind of echoing, I think, what Madam Commission, Madam Chairperson said, which is that I'm not a fan of the five feet. But the original plan approved the five feet, and I don't see changing at this point, making a big impact there. So for that reason, I would be approving this plan today.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I think I would just comment that I agree with what both of you have said, and I was quite surprised on the traffic information, that it doesn't seem to have a real big impact. Because I kind of thought there would be some, but I'm pleased with that.
That's why we do the studies, right? To learn?
That's exactly right.
To learn what the outcomes are. Before we move into entertaining a motion on this, I will just remind the commissioners that we do want to add a seventh condition, that the landscaping will be finalized with city staff, finalized and approved by city staff. And that is to have further discussions and finalization on the shrubs on the south side. So with that, we could entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd move to recommend that the city council approve a major amendment to the Rosemount Woods PUD to develop an additional 39 home sites within the boundaries of the Rosemount Woods Mobile Home Park, subject to the following conditions, which the one through six original ones, plus the seventh to finalize the landscape plan and have it approved by city staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This item also will go forward to city council on February 18th. The next item on our agenda this evening is under new business, and that is a resolution for the modification to the redevelopment plan and a TIF plan for the Ken Rose TIF district, and that it complies with the general plans of the city, and I will turn that over to Kim.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is a quick one, since you have spent quite a bit of your time already looking at a lot of the project-related approvals with the Ken Rose and the Morrison, which was on your agenda at the last meeting. We're getting ready to kind of finalize some of the documentation related to providing some TIF, developing contract with the developer about the TIF and the use of the TIF and the minimum improvements that are required, and also final planning approval and the subdivision approval for the project. All of those are scheduled for December, or for February 4th, council and Port Authority meeting, which is next Tuesday. So as part of the process with the setting up a new TIF plan, one of the requests is that the Planning Commission, as the zoning and land use authority, do find that the TIF plan and the redevelopment plan are in compliance with our general plans, which would be both the permits of plan as well as our downtown framework. And so we had no fear putting this item before you, since we've just worked on both of those, and are requesting that you use, take action on the attached resolution, and then that also will be going to the council on Tuesday with their other activities. So I'd be happy to answer any exciting questions you may have about the TIF plan.
Are there any comments or questions for city staff on this TIF plan? Seeing none, we could entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution finding that the modification of the redevelopment plan and the TIF plan for the Ken Rose TIF district conforms to the general plans for the development and redevelopment of the city of Rosemount.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And Kim, you said this item does also still move forward to city council?
Yeah, the council doesn't take this action, but this will be part of their...
Part of their packet, okay.
...package for the plan.
Perfect. So there's no action for the council, but they will have it as part of their packet?
Not specific to plan that.
Okay. Good, that concludes our new business section for this evening. The next item on our agenda is discussion, and we've got one item at this time listed underneath there.
Yes. So we really thought we did very well on the schedule that we had submitted to you before, and then it was pointed out that the February 25th, which is our next regular meeting, is a caucus night, and so we cannot have the meeting. So the question is, we were kind of hoping that we could reschedule it to the 26th, which is a Wednesday. We can do a Monday on the 24th, but parks commission meets, and sometimes they meet here, but they were happy to move, but we just thought, instead of moving everybody, we would see if the 26th could work.
I am fine with either of those dates. Anyone?
Works for me.
Okay, it's okay to me, just double checking, but I think it's probably fine.
Yeah, that works.
Okay. If you don't mind, then I think we'll just do the 26th. Some of the, you know, the parks just do their own thing.
We don't impact them?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So the 26th, and then as part of this discussion, Kim, I know there's a couple of things going on that are coming up with the city. There is, I believe, a traffic roundabout meeting is February 6th. I was going to be more proactive and bring those things with me, but... Does that sound correct?
Is that the Wednesday? I want to say it's on a Wednesday.
That's a Thursday, so I might have the date wrong, but I think it's just they're on the city website.
Yep, and that is being hosted by Dakota County?
Okay.
As it's a Dakota County-led project?
Okay.
For Diamond Path and Conamara Trail.
Okay. And did I also, I might have dreamt this, but was there also something from the state about, or from the county, about a road input study?
That might be the corridor 42, the 42 corridor study?
42 meeting?
I don't know if there's a meeting on that, though.
I'm not aware of any meetings that have been set up on that. The county is working, or will be working with a consultant, to do a Highway 42 study looking at implementation, areas of implementation and priority over the next 10 years or so. But I'm not aware of any public meetings or public process that's been established with that effort yet.
Okay, that sounds, I should have been more prepared tonight to make sure I had my...
If you, I told you about the calendar, I could read to you some of the upcoming events.
I just thought if they portrayed that we have traffic...
There's a council out and about, chance for informal chats with the council on February 1st from 10 to 11:30. And then the Port Authority has a special meeting next Tuesday at 5:30 to 7:00 before the council meeting?
Okay.
Because of the downtown stuff. No, the Family Fun Festival is February 28th.
Okay, I think that's good. I just recall, we often have traffic conversations, and so I wanted to call out that there was some traffic work going on by the county, so that residents are aware and can take part in that.
And I did find the information for the roundabout... And I did find the information for the roundabout open house. That's a feasibility study, open house. It is on Thursday, February sixth, from four-thirty to six-thirty PM, and it's going to be held at the Rosemount Community Center, room two-twenty-one.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else in discussion?
Well, if you do have any concerns about forty-two, Kyle's our man.
Kyle's our man, okay.
He's our rep on the forty-two corridor group.
Sounds great. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.